People would go out and get 10 percent of the registered voters to sign a petition for it. So, I would stay with the 10 percent.
Okay, well, I need, I'm gonna take a motion. So...
I will make that in the form of a motion then.
Okay.
Okay.
Second? I think, in effect, that will remove a lot of the remedy. So, I think I'm with Mr. Lyman on that one. But, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Of a 10 percent if I say aye.
Aye.
I would just raise your hand. Aye.
You got five.
Five.
Four.
Four. Okay, four to three.
So, that stays.
That stays at 10?
Is that where, I'm sorry, is that where you would add the council's right to call a meeting as well?
Nope.
No. I would assume you'd do that in a special meeting, correct?
Okay, thank you, excuse me.
Okay.
Which is the next one?
It's the next one. To restore the right of the council to call a special meeting.
Second.
All those in favor? For discussion, all those in favor? I think we have to have that at this...
Join, it's not unanimous.
What was that? That one? What was the vote?
Six to...
Six oh?
Zero.
Six oh one, right.
Now, that's only, though, for the council, not the 5 percent of the electorate.
That's correct.
To call.
Right, fine, that's correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Now, would that include that they would, the council would have to ask for a special meeting to dispose of real estate? Or is that a separate?
That's a, now, that's separate.
Okay.
Now, I mentioned a special meeting for the electors of the town. And I had said to put it at 5 percent. I would motion to keep the special meeting available by the electors of town at 10 percent. So, it's the same as the financial meeting. Thank you, Paul.
Okay, motion has been made. Do you have that? Andy?
Yeah, the wording's the same, just gonna put 10 percent instead of 5 to keep it in line with the other 10 percent.
All those in favor of that, raise your right hand. Yeah, no, I, um, the next item is... Quorum. But, I think if it was 10 percent...
Quorum should be 10 percent.
Well, I think it should be 5, but it's...
All I'll say is, I don't think you have to have it the same.
Yeah, I still think it should be 5. I mean, if 10 percent of the, if 1,000 people want a special meeting and only 500 of them can show up to vote, then so be it, you know?
Yeah, and I like the 10 percent for the signatures. I could accept the 5 percent for the quorum, so let's see, obviously, you're not likely to get everyone who signs it to show up, but... And also, just so you don't run into a situation, you have 980 people and you're 20 short of a quorum. And I wouldn't have a problem with the 5 percent for the quorum.
I'll make that in the form of a motion to reduce the quorum to 5 percent.
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Well, wait, you gotta do oppose, we might have some abstentions. So, we got...
One, two...
Three in favor, two opposed, that sounds like a go.
Okay. Well, it's hard when you think the whole thing is, you know, crazy.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's 5 percent?
Coming down by vote by ballot, next one?
Excuse me, so the quorum will change for all meetings from 301 to 5 percent of the registered voters.
Yeah.
Whether it be special or... Okay.
Right.
Okay, now, the vote by ballot, the suggestion was to have 20 percent, one-fifth of the qualified electors present.
That's something that Mr. Rego brought up, and with all due respect, I think I'd like to have the solicitor look at that.
I have. I'll tell you where that came from. At the, at this year's meeting, the question had come up because there was a call for the balloting and the moderator ruled that it was, the charter says you need a majority vote before you go to the paper ballots. And the question, and Mr. Rego came up to me right then and there at the meeting. Now, the moderator did not turn to me for an opinion before he made the ruling, but Mr. Rego came up to me, and then I also did talk to the moderator. It is my opinion, there is a conflict. One section of state law says that 20 percent shall be required for a paper ballot. Our charter says majority. And I was, it was referred to as time to saying, "Oh, does our charter trump state law?" My answer is no. Our charter does not trump state law. Our charter is state law. Since it was approved by the General Assembly, it has the force of state law. Therefore, we have two separate sections of state law that conflict with one another. And therefore, you apply various rules of construction. And in this case, given the fact that the charter was approved much more recently by the General Assembly than that other statute which went back many, many years, I, it was my ruling that the charter, the newer provision, was correct, and I supported the moderator in that ruling. I do acknowledge the fact that there is a conflict between these two sections. And I did not advise Mr. Rego, it wasn't that I recommended the change to him, I simply said if he felt strongly about it, the time to bring up the change, I recommend it was to bring it up here at the meeting, which I think is appropriate, since this is where we're dealing with it, it's been advertised, it's a perfectly appropriate time to bring it up if you want to. I don't have a recommendation one way or another as to whether you should or not, that's your policy choice, but if you want to do it now, it's a really good time to do it, if you want to do it.
Matt? I'm sorry.
I'm comfortable with by majority. I think that if you've got that many people in the room and the majority of the people in the room want to go to paper ballot, I'm comfortable with that. And that's how I feel.
Could I just make one comment on that? Often, when people want to go to paper ballot, it's because they want to vote in private. They don't want to vote in public. And if it takes a majority to go to paper ballot, then the privacy issue is mute.
Just like voting on the...
Just offering my opinion to the fellow counselors and hoping that they'll see the light. Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion on the table?
I'd like to make a motion to change Section 307 voting, vote by ballot to a, rather than majority, to 20 percent.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand. One, two, three. Well, I do think...
How about opposed? See, we have...
Yeah, opposed. One, two.
Interesting voting here.
It is.
It's changed.
One-fifth.
We'll follow the old state law.
Okay, now, hold on.
Page 5.
Yeah.
The May 1, May 15 time.
That needs to be changed to something like 30 days.
No, I'm not familiar with the budget schedule and the meeting schedule, that's why I just kind of said it needs to come up.
Would June 1st, in keeping with May 1st as being when it's submitted, June 1st for approval, would that be...
Well, that means your financial town meeting is then pushed out into July, into the beginning of the year already. If you want to get the financial meeting done before the year, then you've got to move it the other way. Move it April 15th to May 15th. And April 15th is early for a budget, but...
And April is too early. I'm looking at Glenn, I'm just looking at Glenn.
Yeah, it's...
One of the problems that we have now is, we basically had to get the budget passed and approved by, what was it, April 17th, 18th this year, because it was like, it was the day after Easter, because that was, that was one of the problems. I understand what everybody's saying here, but what happens is, we're making a lot of decisions based on assumptions when the legislature starts giving clearer guidance to us in May. And sometimes, very early June, when we actually have more hard numbers from them. Not saying they can't change their mind and do it June 30th, which we've all, you've seen that, you have history, I've had history from the various states I've worked in. The later in the budget, the later in, farther into the budget year in terms of, the later in May, earlier in June, we have more, what I call, solid numbers, numbers that I'm very comfortable with. But, we do what we need to do. And if the date is April 15th, that's when we shoot for. Preferably, I'd like it May 1st, but I understand turnaround time. Maybe make it... Let me get, if you don't mind, if this is going to be discussed on the 31st, maybe some time, more time to think about this and listening to what Andy has to say and what Laura was trying to get through, and let me work this out in my mind.
Well, and the other thing is, given the concerns about the two-week time period between the submission and the vote, it's still a lot longer than we have currently, because we're doing the financial meeting roughly around the 15th, the 3rd Wednesday, and a lot of times, the budget committee's final recommendations are coming in, even though they, there's the, the docket is printed, there are changes being made right up till the meeting, so I don't think it's necessarily a worse situation than we're currently set up in.
Well, there is a, as I recall, one of these changes, there's a more of a compressed period, which I don't have a problem with, because I think the budget process is too drawn out. At least if I can not have to go into budget session with them until March 1st, which right now, I believe, we're going into session with them in the last week of January, that gives us an additional month. And people may find that hard to believe, why do you need one more month? It's because it gives us a better financing.
Okay, you have the time to discuss with, how is it being?
I have one more to address, too.
Okay. I think, Paul, you want to have?
Yeah, I get one more, one that Laura mentioned, too, is going back to page 1. And that's, and that was in reference to the annual financial meeting, if the electors got 10 percent, upon certification of the required number of signatures, the town clerk shall schedule a town financial meeting within 30 days. Maybe through Nancy's office, and we can probably get a number. Nancy, how many days would you need to certify that? You know, because that's not clear, and, you know, it could get to a situation where, you know, if it's four days, if it's, you know, 10 days, or...
Certification could be in the Board of Elections, and they have to meet, so why don't I get back to that?
And that's something that we may have some information for, that we can, if we, you know, that we continue this till Monday night, the 31st, that we might be able to put something there. And Laura did make, mention a good point, that that could be lingered on and on, and by the time you get the certification...
May I just respectfully request that you vote, if you want that, if you want the point, leaving the number of days open at the moment, but if you want a time limit, could I just ask you to vote on that now, so I know where I'm going on that? Whether we're putting it in or not?
If I could just add, I'm sorry, Madam President, I just wanted to add that it would work both ways. If I turn in a 1,000 names to be certified and, you know, 30 of them don't make it, I want time to go out and get more names, so if we put a limit on it, it really, the clock starts again, so there's kind of a glitch to that, you know what I'm saying?
You raised another question, do you want the time period in which it does have to be done?
Right.
If it stands out, somebody could come in in November with 10 percent to be changing the budget in November, it doesn't have any limit at all as to when that could be done.
Currently, in the enforcement system, and they're undergoing this now, is they do do this special financial town meeting in, over the summer, July, August, and I'm sure there's reasons that you don't want to do that. But, that, just that, that does in fact happen, so I think the point's well taken. I think there might be a, and I think there is enforcement, I think there's a deadline, from the time that the budget is adopted, there's 30 days or 15 days, whatever the number is, there is a set amount of time in which you have to submit those petitions.
I think there is. I mean, other, there usually is a time limit, I think Bristol, it's 30 days in which to call, say, to get the signatures for a financial meeting. And other towns, even that have elections, some towns do it as a referenda, of all-day referenda on it, instead, again, there's usually a time limit.
I think maybe if we take a, at least a vote with regard to having some timeframes and having you look at it...
I'll make a motion that we have a timeframe, both for the submission of the signatures and for the certification.
Second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Or opposed? Yeah? Okay.
I'm not in favor. And Mr. Leonard's comment about the disposing of real property?
Yes, I thought that we had...
Haven't gotten to that one yet. Not that he would let you forget it, but on my list, it's on...
I thought that came up when we were talking about having the council call, having the right to...
Well, you, you talked about it, but I just, it didn't...
Well, no harm, no foul, we'll get it on the table. All those...
I'd make a motion that we have a provision that any sale of town property be approved by a financial town meeting.
I'd like to amend that, to state that it has to be by a special financial town meeting or general election.
Okay, good, good.
I'll second that.
Because we could decide to put that right with the general instead.
Okay.
This is to sell any town property? I just don't understand.
Real estate.
Any real estate?
Real estate. And we can still sell old dilapidated trucks and broken snowplows and stuff like that, I'm concerned with real property.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand, one, two, three, four. Um, three.
Not necessarily, you have to call for that vote. We've had, we've had votes that have been 3-2, with two people abstaining.
I thought I counted four.
Well, you counted four in favor, but that doesn't mean seven people vote on the issue. I'm saying, a pass votes, we've had seven people sitting here, and a motion passed on a 3-2 vote, with two people abstaining, so...
All right.
You still want to see if somebody's abstained.
All those.
She's abstained, all of them, I know.
You're in the standing. I'll vote against it.
Okay.
I'm going right, I'm going against it.
Four to one, two abstentions.
Yeah, I think it's too restrictive. I wouldn't want to run a business that way.
Okay, now, let's go on to the financial services.
My point.
Excuse me, just a moment. Please be patient, this is, I know this is a painful process if you're thinking about the streets, but just be patient, but we'll get, try to get through this as quickly as we can.
Are you still receiving public comments?
Yes, we are.
James Hammaranti's 3 Sunset View Drive. It is sad that we are not going to have more time to more carefully examine this proposal. Because if we had more time, I would, I would suggest that what is happening here may be perceived as some as a rush to power. Specifically, a cornerstone of a democracy, as you know, are checks and balances, separation of powers. And what is being proposed is the elimination of two of those checks and balances. One is the financial town meeting, which protects the public from a rogue council. And secondly, is an elected treasurer, which has the ability to say, "No, I'm not going to pay that bill because it's wrong." I would have proposed, because, don't be surprised if both of these go down to defeat if they get to the ballot. My suggestion would have been to please consider a budget committee and town council sitting in grand committee to pass the budget. But that doesn't mean absolute power, does it? Thank you.
I'll move on to the town treasurer.
I think the, if we could ask, Madam President, the solicitor to address Mr. Rego's question about how much latitude do we really have? And I guess I'm, I believe Mr. Rego, because he's a diligent person and does, I know he does his research well, but I also know that there are any number of towns in Rhode Island that have a appointed financial director, which I would, my guess is that there may have been enabling legislation passed, but I'd like to refer that question to our solicitor.
Mr. Solicitor?
I have started researching that, I don't have a definitive answer for you. I know that'll surprise you, but the statute on its face appears to say you must have, the treasurer is one of those offices that must be elected. There's also a statute 45417, which says special statutes controlling. And unfortunately, as you know, there's two sets of laws in Rhode Island, there's the general laws, which you can research, you know, online, Green Valium's nice index things, and then there's what's called the public laws, which are essentially the private little statutes for every little community and so forth. And that's what we're looking to see. I, too, know of many communities that have appointed treasurers and have for many, many years. And I just don't have an answer for you yet as to whether there's a separate section of the general laws someplace that we've missed that provided it. I doubt there's something specific to Tiverton, but there might be something out there which provided more of a general exception to the towns, and I just, I haven't found it yet, one way or the other.
Okay.
And obviously, the same thing would apply to the question of the school committees. On its face, the general law statute does talk about if you have biennial elections, you divide it up into two classes and stagger them with four-year terms. But it also has a savings clause that says special statutes controlling. So, I'm, we'll have an answer for you soon on that.
Okay. Now, I think by, we did agree, I believe, with the language of Mr. Leonard with regard to qualifications.
Yeah.
So, I think we can just operate on that one by consensus. If anybody objects, we'll take it. Okay? Now, did I, now, coming to the budget committee, we are going to look, oh, I'm sorry, this was a two-year?
Yes.
Okay. So, I will entertain a motion?
Wait, a motion?
Just discussion. What I, that's what I, the one that I had proposed, and I think Paul originally proposed, that we were talking about all town offices, including school committees, pending Mr. Teitz's legal ruling on that, I would like to see that, at least give that guidance, that we put that back in, that we are interested in that so long as it is determined to be legal.
Okay. I think a motion that that be provided to us hopefully by next Monday night, should we continue this?
I think it has to be done by next Monday night.
Yeah.
In order to meet the deadline, so...
Right, if it's around, it's off.
Let the minutes so reflect.
And now, in terms of the budget committee term, are we to that point yet?
We are.
Okay. I guess I was looking to see if there was any published comment.
Motion to continue this to the Monday night, August 31st.
No, July 31st.
July 31st.
Is there a second to that? All those in favor? Raise your right hand. Pew. Okay. Tune in next Monday.
Public hearing is continued.
Yes, public portion is continued.
I have a special meeting for July 31st.
Okay. Madam President?
Yes.
I just wanted to make it known that the Board of Canvas has scheduled a meeting on August 1st.
Right.
Sorry.
1st, right, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Never, never correct the 1st.
For the certification of any questions to go onto the ballot, I just want to counsel that in mind.
Okay.
So that you don't run short.
May I? Madam President, may I just ask, since we do have what's presumably a lengthy public hearing and a joint public hearing with the planning board on the comp plan, that you might want to decide now which order you're going to take things in next Monday night? Whether you're going to deal with the comp plan first or the charter amendments?
I do. I think if we're down to just those few charter, my inclination, though, is to get on with the, I don't know how long that comp plan hearing will go, but we start at 7:00. And then, we do, we'll have to have a special town council meeting for this purpose, for the bids.
Yes, Madam President, I have requested to the President for consideration tonight, that we have about five minutes for you to approve, hopefully, the bids for the auditing services, which still has to be approved by the state in the process that it, that they have. It's a very Byzantine process. They had to approve the form, then they have to approve your approval of the auditor.
So, those will be the only three items on that agenda for Monday night, right?
Well, I only have one item.
Yes.
That was that, I'm just...
The appointments will also be on the agenda for that night as well. We didn't mention that.
Because of the lengthy agenda, there are, you want to interview, there's six or seven people now that have applied for these positions, so now we have a competitive situation for some of these positions, commissions. And in light of the lateness of tonight's schedule, we didn't, weren't sure when to call them, so it had been recommended that we consider having them come in at 6:30 or, because they usually only take a couple minutes, we could make it 6:45. Get all that bundled up, taken care of, and then, maybe as part of your special meeting, make other appointments or delay it to your next regularly scheduled meeting, whatever you wish to do.
Well, I think we should finish off the interviews anyway.
Because we've already had one person call today, that said they could come today, but they couldn't come next Monday, so they didn't want that to be a negative influence.
Yep. That somewhat ends our public hearings. How many people are here on the streets? Otaki? I'm inclined to take that next, just instead of having you wait, but I will need, I'll need a motion to move that on the agenda.
I'll make the motion to move item G2, street committee, our recommendation of the council, to the next item on the agenda.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Raise your right hand, please, motion carries unanimously.
Madam, Madam President, I hate to be a party pooper, but I don't think I actually got an answer from the last question. I guess I'm concerned, because we're going to have the, part of next Monday's meeting is a joint public hearing with the planning, with the planning board, and the planning board either, either so that they could know not to, they don't have to be here till 8 o'clock, or if you're going to take it first?
We're going to start at 7:00.
With the, with the...
With the planning board.
With the comp plan.
Get that done, and then, go to a special meeting.
For the...
For the rest of the agenda.
Whatever else.
Okay.
And we would advertise that as being at 8:00 for immediately following the comprehensive plan workshop.
Yeah, what about the 6:45 interviews?
That's a, is that, that's a special meeting?
Yep.
All right, we'll do that.
So, the special meeting, the special meeting will be starting at 6:45, or even 6:30? I don't care.
Well, you want to do two, actually, two special meetings to the...
I think you could put, I think you could do one special meeting with all of these items on it.
Yeah. And then, recess for the other meeting.
Sure. Well, I think you can do, I think you can do the joint public hearing as part of your special meeting on your agenda. And you can have one agenda, so the clerk doesn't have to, you know, have, have multiple agendas on, on the website and so forth. But that, but that way, too, when people look at it, they will see, okay, interviews, comp plan, and the other matters, and obviously, you'll take it up. If the comp plan gets done very quickly, you'll take it up sooner, but people will have some idea where things are. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Town Solicitor. Okay.
I don't know if it makes any difference, but the public advertisement, the legal advertisement has been made to set it on the comp plan, so...
And that would be the plan, that it would start at 7:00 or as soon as the interviews are done, and then carry over the others.
Okay. All right, we are now on Otaki, Chievo, and Shore Road. And we have a letter from the Director of Public Works. from the Director of Public Works. And I recognize Mr. Webster. State your name, please.
Dave Webster, Director of Public Works. Ladies and gentlemen, you have before you a, a report that was requested at the March 27th meeting, where you referred the issue of Otaki Lane and Tebow Lane back to the Street Committee. So this report, while I wrote the report, it was a result of the meeting of the Street Committee that includes Mr. Boland and other members that are here tonight. I, I would expect that you would want to take each one of these individually, rather than muddling through.
Right.
One of the, all of them together.
Right. We'll start with Otaki, and then Tebow, and then Shore.
Okay. On Otaki Lane, what, what was done is the deeds for the five properties along Otaki Lane were, were researched. What we found was that the, the, there is an easement across each of those five properties. An easement does not constitute a layout for a roadway. It doesn't, it, it does refer, each of the deeds refers to the easement or right-of-way on their property. Each of the property owners retains ownership of that portion of the easement that lies on their property. What it does, it gives them rights of passage, rights to pass and repass for each of the five property owners across there. There is nothing that we could find in the clerk's office and the land evidence records that, that establishes a roadway, right-of-way. It's merely an easement. So therefore, it's a, it's a private driveway across the five pieces of property. Now, there's no question that the town has performed services there in the past, including, you know, regularly, regular snow plowing and sanding. And it could well be that the town, I believe that the town actually went in and paved the road, resurfaced the road at one point in time. And also, there's, it's been said that there's some town officials that have made some statements that, regarding the, the status of this roadway. However, I don't believe that was ever authorized by the town council. So the Street Committee is recommending that, that Otaki Lane should be considered, along with the other streets that were voted by the council back in, in February, that these are non-platted roads and they, and it really has no status as a roadway in the town. And again, there's other members here, Rosemary Eva and, and Nancy Mello, and, and Mr. Boland are also members of the Street Committee, so.
They're exceedingly fortunate to be on that committee, I could say.
Yes.
Okay. So the recommendation is that, now this doesn't affect fire or?
No, no, it does not.
Doesn't affect fire or ambulance or, or anything of that type?
No, it's, this would be just like if, if you have a long driveway at your home, you know, a fire truck comes, they're going to come down your driveway to, to fight the fire as long as they can get down there. The same thing with the ambulance or a police car. It does not affect services, that, emergency services.
Currently, how's the trash being picked up there, Mr. Webster?
I'm not sure if the truck goes down there. I would expect that they may go down, but they would have to actually back down that narrow roadway, which is not.
There's no cul-de-sac or turnabout?
There is no turnaround at the end. They don't go down. I'm sorry, I was saying correctly, then they bring it out to the, to Crandall Road.
If I may, Madam President, so in essence, the, the one change that would happen would be that snow removal, sanding would not be done?
No, no Public Works provided services.
Which would be primarily, well, I guess, since there's no right-of-way, then there's no town right-of-way. So it wouldn't be any mowing. So it would really boil down to street repair and snow removal, in essence.
It's an easement. It's all it is.
It's an easement.
According to the, the records.
According to the records that we can find. Yes.
Okay. So I guess the issue, is there anybody who wishes to be heard on Otaki? I think you, go ahead.
Mark Tardy, 68 Crandall Road. We live on the corner of Otaki and Crandall. There are major insurance liabilities here. And one of the biggest ones is if you're going to allow police, fire, and rescue down there, who's responsible for damages to those vehicles? If the road's not plowed and they skid, road's not repaired, their suspension is damaged, shit, could be costly.
I, I would think just that, in my opinion, that'd be no different than an ambulance pulling into your driveway to, to, to rescue someone.
There's a big difference.
That's, I, I would look at that. I would look at, yeah, I'm just, yeah, I myself am responding to your comment, you know, that there are people in this town that, that have driveways that are a couple of thousand feet long. Or, you know, and, you know, naturally, if there's an emergency service, so you have to get in there, you've got to get in there. And, and, you know, the insurance is one thing, you know, the town's insured if something happens to a vehicle, and, you know, but, and we go on private property all the time for emergencies, so I.
Again, that's another issue. This is driving through my property to get to a woman who's down the street and needs a wheelchair, a woman down the street who needs oxygen, and another woman who's in and out of the hospital all the time. The frequency is a lot greater. And someone who just happens to have a couple of bucks in the pocket to buy a big spread with a driveway, this isn't for beauty. This is.
Out of necessity.
Exactly.
It's an easement by necessity.
Well, there's got to be some kind of stipulation. I mean.
Yep.
And if I might, I'm Kristen Tardy, same address, 68 Crandall Road. You're, you're talking about this as, as, as though it's a driveway. You're looking at it as it being a driveway for the people that live behind our property. A driveway, sure. But it's their only way of getting to their homes is to drive through my property. And then for the next house behind me, the person behind them has to drive through their property. What about our personal liability issues now that the town has decided to wash their hands of an issue that they have been handling all along? They've just, the town is now deciding apparently that, that because they don't want to maintain this street, simply because they don't have any record of anyone ever saying that it should have been maintained by the town to begin with, the town started maintaining it. When I bought the house, or when my husband and I bought the house that we live in, it was with the understanding that that road was being maintained by the town. That's what was always happening. And now, we're being told that that liability is being tossed in our lap, and that duty of taking care of that road, to maintain it for the people that live behind us, is being tossed in our lap, when for eight years, this has been maintained by the town. It's, it's a horrible analogy to have to make, but a deadbeat father, or, or, no, I shouldn't say a deadbeat father, but a, a man who happens to pay child support to a child, who he finds out later is not his child, still is required by law to continue paying child support for that child because he started doing it, he took the responsibility to begin with. The town started taking the responsibility. For what reason, I don't know. I wasn't there prior to eight years ago. But the town started taking the responsibility, and now all of a sudden has decided they want to wash their hands of it and drop the, the ownership of it into the people who live there, who have never had to do this before. We've, we've always had the town there to do this. It was tarred by the town, there's a town sign on it.
Please don't make a statement that the town is dropping ownership. The town has never had ownership. Your deed clearly shows that portion of the road on your property. In it, there, in it, in it, there is a statement, and a statement when it comes to a right-of-way says that you have granted the right to pass and repass on a 20-foot strip, which is what the road is, for other people to access their property. The deeds clearly indicate that the town has never had ownership of that. That isn't even where land was dedicated for a road and never accepted. That is private property. If the town has in the past done something on private property, the continuation of a mistake does not have to continue. And it's a mistake to go onto private property.
So there's a?
What, what, well, what the town has done, and is part of the road committee, is we've gone back and researched, all the way back to the 1600s, in some cases, which you'll hear later, in Shore Road, and looked through the records. Because the town, there's a procedure when the town accepts a road. And it came before the council because it was brought up to a standard that the town would accept, and the town accepted that. The town has provided services for some people other than town roads, and the policy is not to continue to provide that because of the liability the town faces being on someone else's property. You, you keep speaking of a liability that you feel you may incur, but when we're there, we are, we have a liability on the part of the town, which the town doesn't wish to take because it's not our land. It is not town land. It is not set aside for a road. It is clearly indicated by your deeds on Otaki Lane that you own the property. You have just given the right for those people who live behind you in the five pieces of property there. And each one of your neighbors has done the same in giving the right to pass and repass through their property to get to the next one. That's what a deeded right-of-way is. It clearly, because, because there is such a thing as a deeded right-of-way, it is clear that it is not town property.
It, but I'm sorry.
When you bought your property, was that explained to you when you?
Not at all.
You got your deed?
Not at all.
Yeah, because when, when you got the deed to your property, that?
And, and I never would have, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I never would have thought to ask the question, considering that it was a tarred roadway, or what appeared to me to be a tarred roadway.
Yep.
Because there is tar through the properties all the way down.
Yep.
With a green street sign that says Otaki. There is a town-positioned stop sign at the top of that road. There is a sign that the town put up that says Dead End. There is a light that the town put in down at the end of the road. So I'm going by partially appearance, but also not having information disclosed to us that apparently there was a standard in place that I wasn't aware of, and that my husband and I were not aware of when we bought this property. And now, we're being told that because the, the town is deciding that they need to relook at certain roads, well, that it's just going to be considered to be a right-of-way, and we're responsible.
But the town, the town is not looking at certain roads. The town is looking at all roads in town. It is taking.
My apologies, I'm going by the letter.
Oh, okay. No, what I'm saying is, those streets were singled out because after going through volume and volume of books and records to see which streets can clearly be indicated, a vote of the council was taken to accept a certain street, or a certain length of a street, or so forth. And then as the town progressed and planning came into play, and areas were plotted and so forth and so on, then roads were carved out and brought to certain standards and are accepted. And some of those have not been accepted. And we have some issues that roads that everyone would clearly believe to be town roads because of all of the things you're mentioning, but the fact that the developer never completed some work or so forth, or went the final step to bring it before the council, they are not town roads. And they're in the same position that you are. It's not an accepted street. And the town's position is, they don't wish to take the liability of being on unaccepted streets.
So if I might pose the question then, if I've got people that live behind me in the houses that, that are behind my property, and an ambulance, or a fire truck, or a police car, or whatever else, has to get to one of those homes, and something happens to either that, or something happens to one of the, the parties that lives behind us as they're driving through my piece of the property, they, God forbid, they get into an accident, hit a tree, and something happens, now I'm responsible?
No. Your deed, your deed has given them the right to pass and repass. And I'm not a lawyer, so I'm not going to get into tech, but what I'm saying is, they have, you've given away a piece of your land for other people to use. I don't think if someone got hurt traveling that, unless you've created the obstacle, you have a liability. If you're, if you're.
Someone whose property slips and falls on ice, I'm responsible.
That's different.
There's a, there's nothing, there's, there's nothing in your deed, there's nothing in your, in your deed that.
You'd have to consult with a lawyer to understand why.
I think we're going to have to.
Yeah, you should.
This is like a very sticky issue.
You probably should.
That would be fine if you did. I think the Street Committee has done a very difficult job. They have researched these issues, street by street. And this is their recommendation, that it is not a platted road. The last time this appeared before the council, we gave you every opportunity to determine if there was any platted road or accepted road, a platted road by the town. There is not. And it's very difficult to override the recommendation of the Street Committee. If you have concerns, I mean, obviously, it's been repeated to you. You'll get rescued down, and frankly, I went down to look at Otaki Lane last Friday, just to see what we were talking about. And with this information before us, you get police, you have the rescue, the right to maintain is not going to be on the town. And that is the recommendation of the Street Committee. So I don't want us to give you legal advice with regard to, suppose somebody has an accident four houses down. Obviously, that would be a stretch. But I'm not going to give you that kind of legal advice, and nobody here should. But I think all before us is the recommend, whether to accept the recommendation of the Street Committee. And I think at this point, we may be, we need a motion to that effect.
Madam, Madam President, if I may ask a question. If, reading the documentation, it looks clear to me that the residents retain ownership. So let me pose a hypothetical, perhaps, to our town solicitor, that if all of the people along that road got together and decided to deed the property to the town, there is a mechanism through the planning board, et cetera, that they could do that. Now, whether it would, would be accepted, et cetera, et cetera, now that becomes a different issue. But there is a mechanism, I think.
Yeah. You need to sort of look at Otaki Lane, too.
There, there is.
Clearly substandard. It's not up to the town road.
It's a, it's really like a long driveway.
Do, do I understand correctly that your comment there is just basically that because it's not in good shape, that it's more of a driveway than a road?
No, no. I didn't mean to say anything, or for you to interpret anything. I just wanted to look before I was called upon to decide this question as to what, what Otaki Lane looked like.
I apologize for misinterpreting what your comment was.
I believe Mr. Leonard was basically saying, you could ask the town to take over the land and dedicate the land for a street. But currently, that would require 40-foot right-of-way, which is twice what it is, which would be giving up 20 more feet of everyone's property. Everyone would have to agree. Then the town, but, but it's not as easy as that because the town usually requires those people giving a street to put the street into a condition that's acceptable, and then the town accepts a street. It's not accepting the land to put the street. Because when we have sub, no, when you have subdivisions, someone gives up that amount of land where the streets are going to go, puts in the street the proper drainage and so forth, then says to the town, returning it over.
I apologize for my ignorance, but why is this considered a subdivision?
It's, it's not a subdivision.
Okay.
I'm saying in a subdivision. When you had a large piece, when you have a large piece of land, you're dividing up. In your case, in order to get to these other pieces of land, whoever owned that land at one sign, time must have been one person. And when he built each lot, and it was probably done prior to zoning, prior to the 60s, that you're allowed to just give a right-of-way and then build on the next piece. We, since, you know, this council's been here, we did a gravel road ordinance so that you could build on roads such as, areas such as that where they didn't have a road, by putting in a road that would meet a town standard, where you could have your 100-foot and get a building from that. Those houses were done, you know, prior to some of this zoning and so forth. And there's just not enough room to, to have a street, and even, you know, even, they're probably all substandard lots for the area you're in.
Are you specifically speaking of the area of Otaki?
Yeah, Otaki Lane. I mean, it's.
You don't think there's enough room there?
Well, I'm saying it's probably an R60, and I don't think each of those lots up there are 60,000 square feet. So it would never be a subdivision. up there are 60,000 square feet, so it would never be a subdivision, or it could be a subdivision under the current zoning. It's there as it exists, and there are lots of record, but they become substandard, you know, to, to upgrade that would kind of be an impossibility. But it's still not a platted road. It, it was, it was, it's literally a driveway. It's a paved driveway.
When, when it was all one property, I could agree with you.
No, even, even as...
Because the town allowed it to be sold to other parties that were not part of that original family.
But they put into the deeds, and it's your responsibility in buying a piece of property to understand what the deed, what rights the deed gives and doesn't give. And those rights were clearly, a right to pass and repasses in each one of those deeds. And that's a deeded right-of-way, and that's what that paved portion is, a deeded right-of-way.
Thank you. Okay.
Winona Clark Smith, 66 Cramble Road, second house in on Otaki Lane. Just have a quick question. Take a second. There's five families on, um, Otaki Lane, and each of us pay very high taxes. And last winter, when the plow came down Otaki Lane, I timed it. It took exactly 60, 60 seconds for the plow to come down the street, turn around at the end, and come back up. Cannot the taxes of five homes pay for 60 seconds for plows time?
Good question.
You know, we have not just your street.
I understand that.
But a slew of private streets, as the street committee has addressed. And basically, on other private streets, the homeowners get together and agree to cooperate in a, in a plowing arrangement. If it's 60 seconds for the town, it's 60 seconds for the homeowners on that street.
We've tried to find a plow person. No one will plow it. Everyone in the street has tried to find their own individual one, and no one will plow it. It's not, it's not worth anyone's time. Unless you have the name of a good plow person that we can hire at a reasonable rate, I would be more than happy to do that.
All right. Well, I, I'm, on that, I will, I'm sure Mr. Webster will give you a slew of plowers, plowings.
We couldn't find a slew, so...
Um, I, I don't mean to be difficult, it's just that this is, we didn't single out Otaki. We have been working on this for a year or more.
And it's been plowed for 45 years, so...
No, I understand, but I think you've heard Mr. Ball on the town's liability.
And the other issue is, in response to your questions, I don't think it's the expense to the town of doing the plowing, it's the, it's the liability that gets involved as, as a public entity, as a town. Does the town want to take on the liability of going into private property to do that? I don't think it's, if it was just the 60 seconds and how much expense that was going to be, it might be a different issue. But you add in the liability, I think that's where the real concern is.
And then, then if you go further, Madam President, you mentioned areas where they are private roads, and the homeowners have created associations or what have you, and they out of, through their joint efforts are paying for all that. If we start saying, okay, we're going to make an exception for point A, then that begs the question, how about point B, C, D, E, F, et cetera? So all of a sudden, that 60 seconds becomes a lot more complicated issue. A, there's a liability issue, which really is what drove the need for the street committee to go forward. This has been, frankly speaking, a hot potato for years, in years. And I'll say for years, make it a whole bunch of years, because nobody wants to be in the position that we find ourselves in of making these difficult choices. And what's driving it is the lesser of the evils. And if we don't address the liability side of it, we're not doing our job, because the liability side is substantial, not, not just for the residents of Otaki Road, but for all the taxpayers in the town. And we wouldn't be doing our jobs if we weren't looking out for the liability exposure that the community has, which in today's world, as you know, if you read the newspaper with some of the court judgments, can be enormous. So we're, we're, we're not doing this because we want to. It's really a duty that we have to carry out for the benefit of the town citizens in total. We can't afford to have a $100 million judgment, which sounds on the surface is not going to happen, but if you look at some of the court decisions, they indeed have happened. So we have to look at worst-case scenarios.
I think one of the things that this whole process is trying to resolve is, over the years, if you, if you look back to the history of town, we've only had an administrative council form of government since the charter came into play in 92, 94?
94.
94. Prior to that, the highway superintendent, or even some of the workers at DPW, you change a highway superintendent, and he sent a guy out to plow a route, and the guy plowed the route, and if he knew somebody was on a private road, he went down there and did it until he was told by a director who saw him doing something like that not to go there anymore. And he, and that came up, and we started drawing back because every road that was there, the guy was on the plow, plowed it. And I, I don't really think we had a list, because we did not have, as you can tell, by the year and a half that we've spent already on this road issue, we didn't have a comprehensive list of what was a town road. Even the books we had, which were showing private and public roads, were a mishmash of information. So we decided to put that committee together, the council decided to put a committee together to do the research, to go through all the land evidence, record books, and so forth, as far back as man. I, I seen us go back to book one, and back to a court decision from the late 1600s on, on Shore Road. So that's how far back the research went to try to, you know, find any information that would support, you know, the contention that these were, you know, public roads or town-owned roads. Well, just Dennis Smith and 66 Cramble Road, I just want to, just pretty much voice some frustration that we have. Everything, you've made some excellent, valid points, but I mean, it's, it's whittled down to as far as what exactly we're getting for taxes. Well, I mean, we pay for, you know, we're self-sufficient as far as water, we're self-sufficient as far as sewage, we have to bring the stuff up, the trash up to the thing, right? It gets pretty frustrating as to, again, you know, why are we paying? And the other point, too, I think I admit, the last time we met, I submitted some photographs as far as, you said, emergency services and such like this. And this is in May, May 1st of 2005, there was a fire at the end of the street there, where I submitted some photographs of, every driveway that we have was packed with fire apparatus or emergency apparatus, you know? And if anything, okay, you mentioned, okay, you have individual liabilities per houses and such like this, right? But what about a fire lane down to Campion Avenue? As far as, you know, wouldn't it be something to at least maintain that road as far as, at least for a fire lane? Because definitely trying to get fire apparatus down, I'm, I'm... Well, no, but what I'm saying is, if, if the fire chief was coming to us saying, I have a problem, okay? I think that's an issue, but I don't hear us, you know, that we have some issues with this. I, I don't know what houses are down there because Campion Avenue, I guess you can drive onto Campion Avenue to get to Campion Avenue. Yes, but I mean, as far as for the backyard, back access to today. Well, I, I understand, but I don't see that as, you know, being the major issue. I think what we're, we're trying to, we're trying to do our best to first of all, come up with a complete list of streets. Then I think, then I think we have to take a look at what we can and can't do, where we know what the streets are. I think the policy the town uses and the acceptance of streets are two issues, and should be looked at separately. We first have to get through the issue of what streets, town-owned and so forth. And I think that, you know, we'll probably look at some other issues. As far as your tax issue, I know I'm going to have a conversation with Mr. Roberts, because I was told some years ago that when people lived on roads that didn't receive services, when evaluations were there, there was a different rate, you know, we have neighborhood factors, and I think that's done when we do assessments. And Mr. Roberts could speak to that. But when they talk about neighborhood assessments, part of that was supposed to be whether or not they were on, uh, private roads, whether they were public roads, and what services were received in coming up with the neighborhood factor. Everyone's taxes are not based on, believe it or not, the same neighborhood factor. There are different neighborhood factors. Now, how, how far they go, I don't know. And maybe that's the other thing we really need to research, because that's another way that people who feel they're being slighted from something because they don't receive a service can be shown that if you, if you were in this other neighborhood with the same-sized house and the same-sized lot, and one of public street is what the taxes would be. And, and it was explained to me that way. I've never seen what these factors and how they apply, but maybe that's another way of looking at the whole issue. But the first issue is to get down to what is and isn't a public street.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Ball. Thank you, Chris.
Andrew Gachuk, 17, Otaki Lane. After sitting here for the last 20 minutes, listened to other residents of Otaki Lane talk about their concerns, the one thing I would ask that you take as a suggestion is, if you're going to release your obligation of Otaki Lane to the residents, and in the past, the town has provided services, can the condition of the road at least be looked at? There are two potholes that are on the road that probably need to be repaired, okay? As far as the rest of the road, there are cracks in the road, they may, need to be repaired. So before you release that to the residents, can you at least come down and take a look at it? I don't know if patching it would be, and Mr. Ball, is there something that's...
No, no, but you keep, you keep referring in your comment to releasing the road. We're not releasing any...
Your obligation, your obligation.
You're claiming an obligation that the town is saying it's never had. If they have provided you something down there, you got something down there that it shouldn't have put there, but it did. You, you get to enjoy what's there, but it's, there is no obligation on the part of the town to go into a deeded right-of-way.
For the last 30 years, it's been.
No, it hasn't been the obligation of the town. The town, if the town has gone down there for that period of time, for whatever reason, it's because a council was not aware of it. I tried to explain that up until 94, you know, a highway superintendent probably was one of the most powerful men in town. You made calls to him, and he did things that the council didn't even know he was doing. If he got a call to go do something, to pave something, to plow something, he did it. He was the one responsible for his budget. He dealt with a budget committee when it came to money. It wasn't the form of government it is today. We're trying to, we're trying to resolve the problem so that we have one standard that's being used throughout the town.
So if, if it was in reverse situation, if the town needed the road for a purpose of something, and it was taken by eminent domain, that would be different?
Oh, it wouldn't be taken. If it's eminent domain, you would have to be compensated for the land that was taken from you.
Well, how could we be compensated for the services that are being taken away from us? Now we have to hire a public plow, okay? If we have multiple snowstorms, I don't know if everyone on the street could afford to hire a public plow. If you want to send a town employee down with a plow truck, I'd be willing to pay the 60 sec, 60 seconds of difference it takes them to plow it.
We can't, obviously, for obvious reasons, we could not do that. But I, I think we probably...
I'm, I'm more concerned with the snow removal and the safety of the people that are living on the road right now. There are, besides elderly and disabled, there are going to be four youngsters that are going in the elementary schools. It's, you know, a good 100-foot walk for some people to get to the top of the road.
Well, I think you've probably heard as many arguments as we have, and, yes.
Can I say some word? My name is Joe Pito. I've been living in Tiverton, on the Fogland Beach, for 44 years. I've been going there. And I have a problem with the roads. People claim they are private, whether the road is been accepted 1860. I get papers, even with a page number there.
Not just...
And what, what people are doing, receive the taxes, and they don't do a thing on the roads.
Um, you're not, are you, did you say Shore Road?
Yes.
Okay, we haven't gotten to Shore Road yet.
Oh, no. High Hill Road, I'm talking about.
You're talking about...
High Hill Road.
Oh, High Hill.
That's right.
But we're not there yet.
Not yet.
We're still on Otaki.
Oh, I'm sorry. Couple of minutes, no problem.
But your time will come, your time will come. Okay, folks, before us is the acceptance of the recommendation of the street committee with regard, regard to Otaki. And I think we probably need to have a motion to that effect.
Mr. Accept.
To accept the recommendation.
I'll make the motion, we accept the recommendation of the street committee regarding Otaki Lane.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand, please. Motion carries unanimously. Now, let's move to Tebow.
Okay, Tebow Lane is, is similar to Otaki Lane in that it is a, nothing more than a, an easement or a driveway across a, a single parcel of land. And we've looked at some of the deeds for, for the properties along Tebow Lane. They do reference the, uh, a right-of-way. In fact, one of them talks about a right-of-way 10 feet in width, as now in use, over the above-described premises to said land of grant as adjoining said premises on the west. Originally, it wasn't that easement or right-of-way, wasn't even for other lots, it was to gain access to an adjoining piece of property. Subsequently, it seems that it became an easement to gain, gain access to other properties along there. But again, we could find nothing in the town records, in the land evidence records, that would show that Tebow Lane has any defined right-of-way, a defined, uh, something that's been dedicated for road use. It is still an easement across private property. The ownership of the property lies with the, uh, it remains with the person who owns that certain, certain parcel. So again, the street committee is recommending with this, with Tebow Lane, as we have with Otaki Lane and, and the others on that list, that it is a non-platted road, and it should be removed from any status as being a street in the town of Tiverton.
Is there anybody here on Tebow? Well, I think we probably had all the arguments we need to have on private versus, so I, I think hearing no comment, then I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the street committee's recommendation on Tebow Lane.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Now we are at Shore Road.
Final street on the...
Whoa, excuse me. Madam President, before begins, I'd just like to note for the record that I am going to recuse myself on this matter due to my prior representation of individuals living on Shore Road.
The minutes will so reflect. Mr. Webster?
The final road before you in the report is Shore Road. Attached to this report is a, are two reports from town solicitor Peter Ruggiero. The first one in 2005 stated that the road was, he felt the road was, was private. However, through subsequent research, and after additional information was provided to Attorney Ruggiero, he issued a, a subsequent letter dated May 16th that effectively said, Shore Road and the associated road system in the Fogland area were established as public, public ways in 1663. The current bounds of the roadways in the Fogland area were revised in 1893, with the presentment and acceptance of the highway plan by the Highway Committee as recorded in Town's plat book at pages four and 64. However, Attorney Ruggiero also cautioned that we should look to make sure that the roadway, as it presently exists, conforms to the plan that's on record. And that's where we have a little bit of discrepancy. For while we have, there are, road, the roads that were shown on the plan include what we now know as High Hill Road, also includes Shore Road, a portion of Fogland Road, and what we know as Three Rod Way. Well, it's shown on the plan, it shows completely as three-rod highway, that's how it's all labeled. But the problem is that in the field, there is an angle point in what we know as Shore Road. On the plan that's recorded in the clerk's office, it is shown without any angle point. It's a straight line. Therefore, the roadway as it's presently being traveled is... Therefore, the roadway, as it's presently being traveled, is not within the boundaries that were recorded in 1893. Now, I have those plans here that I can show to you. We need to get resolved why the roadway isn't within what was accepted in 1893. It does seem apparent, by looking at it, if you project the straight lines from what is there now, it would be in the water. So obviously, it would seem obvious, but we don't want to assume, but it would seem somewhat obvious that there's been some kind of an erosion down there. And for whatever reasons, whether it was moved officially or moved unofficially, the piece of Shore Road at the westernmost end does not lie where it's supposed to.
Okay, so the issue before the council is whether to authorize a survey?
Yes. What we need to do is... There needs to be some further research on this to determine why the road is not in there. And I mean, if... Maybe there is something official, maybe... And I'm not sure if it would start with a survey or start with some additional legal work, if we could get an opinion of whether the roadway in its present location is perhaps the accepted roadway. That would... That's a possibility, too, that it could be used to solve this issue.
So the issue before the council is, one, to do further research, including the possibility of a survey.
That is correct.
But that is not a sine qua non, so to speak, of this motion.
Okay.
Street committee?
The... I think when you look at the decisions in Samuel Almy and Daniel Turet, that it was held that the highway existed from the time of the allotment of land, as shown by the record, that the public right was not extinguished by adverse possession, and that the town council was entitled to reopen the highway as originally laid out, or as varied by substitution, which such is shown to be the fact. But the fact that it was established as a public right-of-way, does this take us back to some of this issue of insipidly dedicated land, where land was set aside for a road, and acceptance still had to take place after a road was established? I know we don't have...
...the old paper streets.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, when you're reading...
They showed on the plan, but they were never...
In reading the decision, it basically says that the highway existed from the time of the allotment of land, and shown by the records that the public right-of-way was not extinguished by adverse possession, and that the town council was entitled to reopen and take ownership to reopen, because this was a blocked road. And what they were doing was seeking permission to open a road. Now, I... You know, I think we need to determine what in fact, you know, took place from this, and I guess, I don't know if we can go back and find, you know, the court records from 18... In reading this, it's like, you know, just saying that what the town did in that court suit was saying somebody blocked what was four or five roads, which at the time probably were the only roads, you know, that existed in Guttler Little Compton, and that the court gave them the right to reopen them so that the public would have a way to get to other places. That's the way I read that statement. And I mean, I know somebody else, you know... Ruggiero isn't here to tell us what he feels about that. Before we do a survey, you know...
Well, I think, Mr... As I understood, he wouldn't do a survey until further research was done.
Yes, and I think that the only thing that's in question is the piece of Shore Road that's actually out of the alignment, as shown on the plan. I think that the rest of it, it does seem clear from Attorney Ruggiero's report, that it is a public road. In fact, he says the town council's action on July 3rd, 1983, to accept the highway presented by the Highway Committee, I think he meant 1893...
Yeah, I think he...
Evidence acceptance of Fogland Highway Network as public roads.
Right.
So I think that it seems pretty clear that there was a movement there in 1893 to do this. It's just a question of where is it now?
I'm saying, in counter to that, though, because High Hill Road was part of that road system...
Correct.
And we have evidence that High Hill Road, when it was paved, was... Became an accepted road because it gave distances from... To a certain point, I think then it was... There's an extension that goes to a certain point. So I mean, those things were clearly voted on by a council, whether or not it was the council didn't have this earlier information and was acting, you know, without this knowledge, or is this, you know, stating that we were opening up a road that was being... You know, it's like when somebody blocks something, we're just going to court to say, "Open that up. Take the barrier down." And this gave us the right to take the barrier down so the public would have access to it.
May I ask, Mr. Webster, when you refer to the road showing on the plan, what plan are you referring to?
The plan from 1893.
There's been no other recorded plans up there in the land evidence records since then?
Not that we're... Not that we found, and not that Mr. Ruggiero found. There are actually two plans in 1893. I have portions of them here.
Only the 1926.
I see the one you... Someone provided with our packet.
Okay, that was not included. That was not included, nor we have. Again, you see the straight line?
So that's Shore Road?
Right. If you look, this is...
Wait, why don't you just hold them up so we can...
Okay.
Yeah.
There are two plans here. This is the earlier plan. This is in Book 1, page 4. And you notice they're showing this as the Little Compton Town Line. But again, you notice the roadway is straight down to High Hill Road, which is pretty consistent with the plan that you have there, 1926. Then if you look at this one, the difference is the location of the Tiverton-Little Compton line, which is right there. Apparently, that Town Line was shown error, which means that we just own a little piece of this roadway that this plan showed here. But clearly, you can see that the road is laid as a straight line here. However... If you notice how the assesses map is shown, and again, assesses maps cannot be used in a survey. We realize that. However, it does give a good indication. You can see there's definitely an angle point here in the roadway.
Okay, so before us is your proposal to do more research.
Yes.
I will entertain a motion to that effect.
Madam... I'm sorry.
I'll second it.
Mr. Wyman?
Well, my discussion is public input. There are few people here tonight from Shore Road, and I'm sure they'd like to have their say, and I think they should maybe have their say before we vote on anything, but it's my thoughts.
Okay. Although, it's really... It's not a public hearing. We're just actually doing more research.
No, but we let everyone else from the other roads come up and speak, so I guess it's only a decent thing, but...
Madam President, just for the record, anybody who called me in regards to this issue or emailed me, what I said was tonight that was specifically in front of the council, was the issue of doing additional research and/or having a survey performed on the road. It was not going to be a public discussion on whether it's private ownership or public ownership at this particular point, but was for the council to give the staff more direction on where they wish to go. So that was what was said to people. A number of people chose not to come, because I did get emails confirming that, as long as they knew it was not going to be a full-blown discussion on public ownership of the road in terms of public comment. So I feel that I need to make sure that I've already discouraged some people, I think, from coming tonight because of the issue. I don't know what has been going on in the community, but anybody that spoke to my office or spoke to me personally was told that.
Hearing that, Mr. Wyman, I think, view of what the town administrator said, that we'd be reversing what his instructions were, and I don't think that's fair. But what we will do is, when our research is done, we will make it available to everybody who has an interest. And if all of you do not have a copy of this letter from Peter Ruggiero, or what we have tonight, by all means, the clerk has a copy. You can take it and look at it prior to the next time that we deal with Shore Road. But we will, in fact, make sure everybody's alerted when we know what the results of that research is.
Madam President, my name is Marty Camara. Would there be a time limit on this? This has been going on for several years in the neighborhood, and we're all really sick of it. And we'd like it to be put to bed once and forever.
We would, too. Believe me, we do not enjoy sitting here, talking about roads, Mr. Camara, as you can probably appreciate. But we need to do it right, and we need to do it once and for all.
Is there a time limit? I mean, I don't want to see this drag on another year.
Yeah. No, I don't either. So you're... Go ahead.
Madam President, we do know that Mr. Ruggiero is going to be here on another matter on the 17th of August, whether... I don't know what type of research we're going right now. Obviously, we could never get a survey done in that part at that point, if you want to have some further discussion with Mr. Ruggiero, because he has difficulty attending the Monday nights. And as you are well aware, what your city solicitor has already... Town solicitors already inform you, there's this conflict of interest, which is why we went to Mr. Ruggiero, as I understand him prior to my coming here. He will be here on the 17th. But I... If we're going to go to ask him to do additional research in terms of what questions maybe the Roads Committee has, we can get those questions to him. But in regards to a survey, that's near impossible, I would think, to get a survey done by that point.
Now, there's... Mr. Camara, I'm sure he knows that, too.
Let that ask one more thing. Where it's been documented that Shore Road is a public way, town and Tiverton's been the court years and years ago. Can we get these rocks removed, these signs down that are there? I mean, a lot of us don't like the rocks there. It narrows the road down, and for me, I'm personally upset about it because we have a hurricane. They headed right for my home, you know? And none of us know what's going to happen with the weather. So if there is a town road, I would like to see those removed, the private roads down. I mean, we're all... We've been here... I've been here for 53 years, and never in my life have I had to live the way I'm living right now. All of us. All of us. You know, and we need help. We need help. You never heard from us before in this town. We were in our own little world, and now we are the highway.
I don't believe that. Mr. Camara, you've always been a factor in this town. I don't believe a word you said.
I hope that's a good thing. I'm outspoken.
One of the problems we run into, and one of the problems in getting surveys and stuff down there, is because if you're removing something, you want to make sure you're removing something that's in the road and not removing something that isn't.
Well, from the way I see it, the way the surveys are from people's properties, I mean, you just measure from there. They're in the road. They're in the road.
We need to figure out... We need to figure out where the road is before we move anything, and that's, I think, the issue of...
Madam President, I...
No, no, that's where it currently... That's what you would appear to be. We clearly have indications that the road was a straight piece of land that doesn't exist today because it doesn't take that same way. We are not going to take actions until we know... I mean, part of the road may not even be there. It may be in the river.
Can you have two roads without an intersection?
All I'm saying is that we want to make sure that when we do something with Shore Road, because there's some questions, we want the questions, the legal questions answered because of the ambiguity that we read into some of this. That's why we need the attorney who did the research to tell us, and then we need to figure out where the road should be. And then we can see what we can do, as if we can even do a road.
You know, I recognize Mr. Camara because he's hard not to recognize.
He is.
But I got to tell you that I don't... View of what the town administrator said, I don't want to get into a back-and-forth, back-and-forth until we have the facts. So just be patient. I know you've been patient. But we need to get... Do it, and we need to do it right. Okay? Thank you.
Excuse me. Can I say a couple words, please? Now is my turn? The reason I'm talking is this. Those rocks there, they are dangerous for hurricanes. Also, the signs are dangerous there because a lot of cars go and pass by, they back up. They can cause accident right there, and you people don't do nothing?
All right, thank you.
Did you hear, Mr. Bowen? We want to make sure that when we remove the rocks, we're doing it on the right place. So just bear with us. We want to make sure we're doing it right.
As long as they put them on this property, it's nothing to do with me.
Thank you.
Okay. That is the end.
Madam President, Lou LeDoux to Shore Road. The rocks that they're alluding to, council, are rocks that were put there by people who fought to keep that area from no parking. They've been before the council?
That's a lie.
May I have my piece, please?
That's true.
May I have my piece?
That's...
There are people that are sitting in this room that will testify, but I don't know if they will stand up. But those rocks have been put there by people so that people wouldn't park. They went before the council in past years to put no parking signs because they were disappointed with people parking, distributing trash.
Okay. I'm going to end this conversation because I...
Everyone else had their turn, ma'am. I'd just like to have my piece, okay?
Well, no, they didn't have their turn because I said, I recognized Mr. Camara who approached. You will be given an opportunity to, with all these people here, to make the arguments as soon as the council knows where it's at and our research is done. And what I have said is, the council will make available to you, through the town administrator, any information that we get, and we will schedule a time to deal with Shore Road, I hope, finally.
Okay, so you're telling me I can't speak anymore?
That's right.
After three people have spoken. Thank you very much.
Okay. Hold on. Don't carry on this argument here. I'm going to move on.
I would just like to say one more thing. As is obvious, this is a volatile situation. I hope everyone that's working on it moves quickly. It really is. Thank you.
Now, we have... We're going to move on to...
I think we need to vote to do the survey.
Okay. All those in favor...
Yes.
Motion made. Seconded. All those in favor, the motion, raise your right hand.
Further research, correct?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Show pause. Okay, next.
Contingency.
Just take a minute until we go to show pause.
Can I take like five minutes?
No, you can't go far.
I can't?
No, no, no. I'm not going to take this. All right. I'm going to move to the show pause hearing. This was continued from our July 10th meeting.
Good evening, Madam President, council members. Would you prefer we sat at the table?
There's two of you. That'd be probably nice. Thanks. For you as well.
Yeah. It's been a long day.
It's going to be longer.
We push these as late as we can.
Okay. For the record, my name is Attorney Maria Segden, 38 Bellevue Ave, Newport. I represent Faith Bortz. I understand we're here in a show pause hearing. I'm not sure of the procedure here. I have spoken with the chief regarding the recommendation. I don't know if he goes first, and we get a chance to rebut it. However, whatever the procedure is, we're certainly going to accommodate that. So maybe I could pose the question, would you like me to speak in rebuttal or in mitigation first, or does the chief go forward with his recommendation?
Go ahead.
If I may, I think that the first question is whether you're admitting the violation, and you want to just discuss the mitigation, or whether you're not admitting the violation. Either way, we would normally have the chief go first, and then you would have a chance. The question is...
Madam President, members of council, on April 26th, patrols... Uniform Patrol Division was checking the area of State Avenue. Came upon a vehicle that had two underage males sitting in a car. They had a conversation with these males and subsequently went into PJ's Cafe, where they found another underage male drinking a bottle of beer. And he was subsequently placed under arrest, transported to the police station. Excuse me. The barmaid was asked if the person had checked an ID. At first, she denied it, and subsequently admitted that she had not carded him, that she was familiar with him, and he was a regular patron. Afterwards, she did, in fact, plead guilty to serving a minor in municipal court, paid $100 fine. The minor received court fees and 20 hours' community service during his case on July 26th. The officers who did respond did ask to see the register book, examined it. There was no signatures pertaining to the individual, and subsequently, the summons was issued.
Chief, and how old was the individual?
19 years of age, sir.
And the bartender... Excuse me, may I?
Yes, sure.
And the bartender did acknowledge that she did know this individual?
Yes.
And that she had not carded him or had him sign the book?
He said he was not carded. She subsequently admitted that she had... She was familiar with him. He had been in, and he did not show us any identification at that time.
And was the bottle, which was labeled beer on the outside, was that seized as evidence as well?
Yes, it was seized and poisoned evidence.
Thank you. And chief, did you have a recommendation to the council? I believe it's in writing, but just for the record, for the attorney, you have a recommendation of a proposed penalty?
Yes, I did discuss it with council. It's the same recommendation I have for all liquor violations, first offense, and that would be $1,000 donation to the Substance Abuse Task Force or a two-day closing. The donation would be honored before August 31st, and the closing, at my discretion, would be honored before September 4th.
I think it would be appropriate if the attorney has any questions for the chief. This would certainly be an appropriate time for any cross-examination that you might have for the chief.
Well, I wasn't really prepared for a trial, so to speak. I don't have anything of the chief. I certainly have, I guess, through me, testimony on behalf of my client that I would like to present.
I think it's important to distinguish, you're the attorney. You're not presenting testimony. If you want to present testimony, it should be presented through your client under oath. If you want to present argument on legal issues, then that's for you. Testimony as to facts needs to come from your client. And as a matter of fact, I don't think we did swear in the chief there, but we... I think we should confirm that. I think that, Madam President, if you would confirm that the testimony given by the chief, if you would swear him in retroactively, if you will.
I will do that. Would you raise your right hand, chief? Do you swear that the testimony that you have given is true and correct in all respects before this council?
I do.
All right, well, I guess I'll go ahead and just kind of wing it. Do you need to swear my client in?
Please.
Yes.
If you give your name and address for the record.
My name is Faith Bortz, 301 State Avenue, apartment 2, Tiverton, Rhode Island, 02878. Ms. Bortz...
I'm sorry. If you're going to examine her, I'll swear her in before you do that.
Okay.
You want to swear in?
Could you raise your right hand, please?
Okay. Do you solemnly swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the matter proceeding before this council?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bortz, do you own a business establishment here in Tiverton? Yes, I do. And what is the name of that establishment? PJ's Cafe. Where is that located? 301 State Avenue, Tiverton, Rhode Island. Are you the owner-operator of that establishment? Yes, I am. And generally, what kind of a business is it? It's a bar/restaurant. Now, approximately, how long have you owned and operated that business? Almost three years. Okay, with respect to the current matter, do you know the individual, the underage drinker of whom the chief has referenced in his testimony? Yes. And do you know his full name or just know him as a nickname? Just know him as a nickname. And what was his nickname? Dee. Do you know whether or not this individual was ever carded in your establishment prior to July 10, 19... Excuse me, 2006? Yes. And do you know by whom? He was carded by my daughter, Amber, and myself, and he did sign the minor book. And do you have copies of the... I'm sorry, the logbook? Yes. It's okay if I present them? If I give them to the clerk, is that... All right. At the time that Dee signed the book, did he present a valid ID? Yes, he did. And do you recall what that ID was? It was a driver's license. Did you examine the ID? Yes. Was there a photo on that ID? Yes. And from what state was that ID issued? Rhode Island. Was there a likeness between this individual Dee and the photograph as depicted on the driver's license? Yeah, there was. Now, subsequent to Dee being arrested on or about July 10, 2006, do you have any conversations with him? Did he come back and talk to you? After he got arrested? Yes. Yes, he did. And can you tell us the summons substance of that conversation with you? He came back the next day to pick up his vehicle. And when I approached him and told him that he was drinking underage, that's what the police had informed us that had happened that night, he said yes, but he had had a fake... It wasn't a fake ID. It was someone else's ID. And he was using it as his ID, and that's what he had given us in the bar. And when I said, "Did you give it to the cops?", he said, "Yes, they took that ID away from me that night in the police car." I told them that I had given you the wrong ID. Ms. Bortz, I'm showing you a copy of a document that's been handed out to council. Would you please look at that? Yes. Do you recognize that copy? Yes. And what is that? It's a copy of the original of the minor book I have that was filled out by Dee. And how do you recognize it as being that copy? It's the same one that I had seen. Okay. Does it fairly and accurately represent your logbook? Yes. Okay. With respect to the copy, is there an asterisk on it? Yes. Is that the portion of the logbook you showed Dee on or about July 11, 2006? Yes. Thank you. Now, the bartender who was fined with respect to the service of an alcoholic beverage to Dee on or about July 10, 2006, does she work for you anymore? No. As the owner and operator of PJ's, have you or any of your staff or both gone through a training program referred to as server training on premise alcohol awareness server program? Yes. And do you recall when you went through that program?
Excuse me, I think it was about a month, two months ago.
Okay, and did you receive some sort of documentation?
Yeah, we all had... We've got cards.
Okay. Anybody else in your staff go through that program?
Yes, my husband, my daughter, and my husband's nephew that also works for us.
Okay, what is your daughter's name?
Amber Bortz, B-O-R-T-Z.
May I pass these around, ma'am? President, we'll need these back.
Yes.
And what is your understanding that the reason for that training is?
Well, it's to show you so that you know what questions to ask, what to look for in a fake ID or a bad ID, how to question the... When they come in and hand you the ID, they're supposed to fill out the book while you have to keep the ID and ask certain questions and look for body language and different things they do in case they're, you know, fooling you or it's a real thing.
Now, with respect to Dee, who completed... Or not, excuse me, who presented the book to Dee for completion?
My daughter, Amber.
And do you know why that was done?
He looked young, so, you know, you check them all the time. And if they look it, even if the ID, because it was a real ID, it wasn't a fake one, it wasn't a made-up one, it looked, you know, and that's what we were taught, to go through the little things. And then you have them sign the book, and if it's a fake ID, it's, you know, if they got over on you, they skate it. But we did everything we were supposed to.
Can you think of anything else you would have done to comply with the terms and conditions of your liquor license?
None that I can think of at this moment, no.
Would you agree that you took reasonable steps to ensure that nobody underage was being served at your establishment?
Yes.
Ms. Bortz, did you have occasion, for purposes of this evening's hearing, to go speak with other business neighbors of yours?
Yes, I did.
And was a letter drafted with respect to that conversation with the business owners?
Yes, it was.
All right. Again, Madam President, may I pass this around? Ms. Bortz, have you ever been alleged, or has it ever been alleged, that you violated the provisions in your liquor license?
No.
What have you done to make your business, PJ's, a more, for lack of a better way, a more reputable establishment for the community? Can you tell us about that?
Yeah, if anybody knew anything about Manny's Cafe before we bought it, it really wasn't the best place in the world. It's probably one of the worst places. The apartments were used for... Not for rental. And there was other things going on with drugs and prostitution and everything else in the bar and in the building itself. We bought the building. We lived there. My children also lived there in the apartments with us. We cleaned up the whole building. We put in the fire escapes. We've done all the fire alarms and everything else. We've remodeled all three apartments inside, plus the bar, and we cleaned up the outside.
As a business owner in this community, have you supported the local police, for example?
Yes. Every year, they call us up, they do the phone solicitation for different things, for their basketball, baseball games, the comedy thing we donated to at the high school where they had the comedy guys come and do the comedy review. We did the baseball. We donated to the baseball, putting that catalog together and everything else. Several different things we've donated in the area since we've been here in the last three years.
Have there been any other agencies or departments within this community that you've supported as far as making donations as well?
Just, well, we've done a lot of in-house for people who had their houses burnt down. We had them, they come in. We had a day where, the whole day, all the profits from bar went to them, like a raffle and everything else. One, two fires, there was a car accident. And then we were approached by a little girl who lives in Bristol, who is... She was bored with her pancreas outside of her body, and they yearly do benefits for her. And we held it with conjunction with another place in Middletown at our bar two years ago, and we still donate to them and have a party for her yearly.
Just roughly, do you know how much you've donated to, say, the police force in Tiverton?
Between the police and the different things they have, it's usually $300 to $800 for each different catalog, or I don't know what they call it, the little thing you donate your money to, that they make up.
Ms. Bortz, is there anything else you'd like the council to consider prior to its decision on this matter?
Just, we've tried everything. I mean, we went to all the classes. We do everything that was supposed to do, check the IDs, go back over them. We've all been to the classes and everything, and it just seems like we did everything we were supposed to, and I'm still going to, you know, I'm going to get in trouble for doing it, you know? I wish the kids would give us a fake ID, but I, you know...
Let me clear that, Ms. Bortz. This was not a fake ID, was it?
No, it wasn't a fake ID. It was actually somebody's real driver's license that he borrowed off the front, that he was using, not just for us in the area to get into the bars, with different bars and clubs and stuff in the area, and in Providence, everywhere.
And did that ID indicate that the holder of it was at least 21 years old? Okay. I don't think I have anything else as far as testimony goes.
Madam President, may I ask a few questions?
Yes, please do.
Ms. Bortz, the bartender who, in question, no longer works for you, you said?
Right.
And did she leave voluntarily, or did you fire her?
It was... She left voluntarily, and it was mutual, basically.
And how long had she been employed by you prior to that?
Two to three months, I would say. It wasn't very long.
And had she taken the stop program?
Yes, she did. She had gotten her card. She went to the same program as my daughter, so I know hers was issued on 03012062.
Madam President, if I may, I reviewed the police report, and the sergeant is the one who asked the individual if he was carded. Then, in itself, to present a false idea of possession of someone else's property could be a crime of receiving, larceny, or simply producing a false ID, he would be charged with that, and there's no indication of that. That disturbs me that there would... An officer would be... Not an accusation, but it suggested that the officer didn't follow protocol, and I have a reason... I have no reason to believe that the sergeant would not have charged the individual with the fake ID or the... Someone else's ID in his possession.
Okay. Do you have any other further questions?
No further questions, just brief comments, if I may. I... This underage individual, I don't know him. I'm not the prosecutor here. But obviously, this is not a person who, you know, he pulled one over on my client, so to speak, and nothing against the chief, but having been a former elected district attorney in Nevada, I know that people who are charged with crimes aren't necessarily the most forthcoming, particularly to the police, and they're certainly not going to necessarily make further incriminating remarks to law enforcement. I have no reason, certainly, to doubt my client. She's waited here since about 7:00 this evening to come before this board and present her side. We weren't ready for a hearing, however, I believe we just came through it just fine. And I would ask that... And I understand where the chief is. He's in a position to uphold laws. Liquor licenses are to be taken very seriously. However, in this scenario, this is not a blatant, willful, knowing infraction. The bartender is history. The underage individual, apparently he was arrested. I don't know what his criminal status is, but I'm asking that this council waive any sort of infraction or any sort of penalty. Again, it wasn't willful. I think that my client has done everything humanly possible to ensure that the patrons who are coming in and either purchasing or consuming alcohol are complying with the law.
Do you wish to comment?
Yes, Madam President, I just have one thing with respect to the comment about not being ready for the hearing. I just want the record to reflect that this originally came up in May and was continued at that time until July, and the licensee had notice of it at that time in several weeks. And then, when they appeared two weeks ago, indicated that they were not ready to go forward at that time. They hadn't received the notice that long ago, even though it was personally delivered, but it hadn't been that far in advance. And the council at that time gave them an additional two weeks. So I just want to put, for the record, as far as the due process and the opportunity to be prepared for a case, it's been since May, and with an additional two weeks' grace by the council since the last regularly scheduled council meeting.
So when we were here, the problem was that the address on this, that they sent everything to, was 103. I came down here to try and correct it, and they had all our address as 301.
That's why the council gave two further weeks from the last meeting, so that there wouldn't be any question. You said that two weeks ago when the council... I recommended, and the council agreed to give you two weeks more two weeks ago, so there wouldn't be any question further about that. Beyond that, I'd just like to mention to the council, I think, as you know, this, as a liquor license, there is no requirement, if you will, of a bad faith, it's strict liability. Our laws are very strict as far as what the licensees are required to do, it's up to you, you have broad discretion as to everything from nothing, to a verbal warning, to a fine, less, more, the same as what the chief has recommended, all the way to suspending the license, and it's up to you to decide that based on your view of what you've heard and your past practices.
If I may, if I just wanna respond to your attorney, I guess my point was, you know, my client and I were first able to meet about, I believe I was retained at four o'clock this afternoon, I don't know that I would have done anything differently had I had two weeks to prepare, I appreciate the opportunity for being able to put on testimony. Again, laws are written by human beings, they need to be applied by human beings, and there is certainly some mitigation here, and that is what we are appealing to this council on my client's behalf.
Can we ask questions, Madam President?
Yes, right ahead.
Chief, under the tips program, the training program, what is the requirement when someone signs this book? Is it required that they sign it every time they come in the establishment?
Not too much.
Either, I don't care who answers the question, I mean, you know...
This is directed at the chief.
Okay, go ahead then, chief.
They should be examined every time that they come in, it's not, it's not a one-shot deal where they come in and you start to know these people, people look familiar, they're crowded times, you just arbitrarily decide which night you're going to do this. And if I may, also, as far as the fact that the person not be forthcoming with information, all prisons are inventoried, if we found someone else's property during an inventory, that would have been confiscated, so that, to kind of answer your question about someone else's ID being forthcoming.
That was my, that's why I'm asking you the question about, you know, the signing of the book, because I can come in tonight, or a couple of times, and show you an ID, and then, you know, once I'm known and you're not gonna ask me, I may not have it on my possession.
You may not have to, it's their liability, it's their license that they're holding subsequently.
Any other questions from the council?
Yeah, I might have one question. Since the identification process is a picture ID, did that picture, when you examine that, or when a person examined that ID, did that picture reflect the person who was sitting in front of her?
Yes, yes it did. They both had very round faces, same facial features and everything, because my, he did sign the book, when I had asked him for his ID later, he had told me it was already in the book, so I had looked at it, made sure it was the same ID with the same signature and in the book, and I just, I said okay, 'cause he had already signed it. And I thought that was the right thing to do. I didn't know he had to sign it every time they came through the door.
Well, it's, it's, actually, he doesn't have to sign it every time he comes in the door, but it's at your peril.
I'm having trouble with the fact that the barmaid was pleaded guilty for serving underage, drinking.
I had no idea at the time that she was even coming here, I didn't know that she had been charged or anything, she wasn't in my employee at that time.
Right.
So, if I would have known that she was coming and was being charged, excuse me, I would have showed up with her, as being the bar owner, I had no idea until after the fact, then she told me.
Madam President, I have a question for the chief, when you say the woman that was tending bar admitted to serving an underage person, did you have any indication that she had knowledge that that person had already signed the logbook?
No, she just said she was familiar with the person, and he indicated during that particular evening he had not been carded to the police.
Clearly, he had been, at least for office.
Well, not that particular night, because the sergeant didn't in fact take the logbook and compare it, and his signature was not in the book, so the ID, that he could, that couldn't be either.
Yeah, it was the, it was your daughter Amber that had, had him sign the book.
Yes, that had him sign it.
I'm sorry, Cecil, I might suggest that, I don't know what you learned in that carding thing, but when I make out a fake ID when I was young, and I had a fake ID from Coventry, and I lived in Tiverton, I'd write Tiverton by mistake and cross it out and then correct it, and I hope you tell everyone to watch for that.
Yes.
That's obviously a blunder on his part.
It's actually from Little Compton.
So, he didn't even know where it was from?
He was drinking in Tiverton.
Okay. Well...
Where are we at?
We are at the point where we can make a decision, I believe.
Well, I would make a motion that we issue a warning to Peaches Pub, because I think, I think that the owner has demonstrated that she certainly has made a, perhaps not perfect effort, but certainly a good effort, and I would, if I put myself in her shoes, I may know that the law requires me to card people every time and to sign the log every time, but frankly, I doubt that I would do that, I mean, there's, at what point do you get logged down with bureaucracy? The fact that the bartender of the evening did plead guilty is certainly troubling, but the fact that that bartender's no longer there, I think indicates that some level of corrective action, whoever initiated it, has been taken, so I would, I would motion for a warning.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All those opposed to the motion, raise your right hand. Did I lose count?
You need to call for extensions.
Okay, are those that wish to abstain? Let's do that again. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Two. All those opposed to the motion, raise your right hand. Three. Those abstain, two. Motion fails. Okay?
I, for one, I believe that we have sufficient evidence based on the guilty plea of the bartender, so therefore I would support the recommendations of the police chief, either a $1,000 fine or a two-day closing, and I'll put that in a form of a motion, and what we can do is, if that carries, by all means, I, as it was recommended earlier, if that did carry, I would look at and see which one you would choose and then work it out accordingly. So I put that in a form of a motion that found in violation, and I'll pay either a $1,000 fine or a two-day closing on or before September 4th.
Is there a second to that motion? I will second it.
I'll second it for the purposes of...
Okay. All those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand. Two. Those opposed, three.
Four.
Five.
Five.
Okay.
I think, I think that the individual has demonstrated that they're working in the right direction to make sure that they're running an establishment, you know, that doesn't run afoul of the law. There are certain facts in the matter, though, in my opinion, you know, that the fact that he didn't even have an ID on him, or, you know, is troublesome to me, you know, the fact that, you know, they served him just on the recognition, that bothers me. I think we have here something that needs to have, something somewhere in the middle. I think the fine, you know, is a little steep for this business, I think the two-day closure may be a little steep, I think we can come to some remedy somewhere in the middle of this, I think there was, you know, culpability on the part of the bar in not going as far as they maybe should, I'm sure your policy's going to change, and that you're gonna ask for these and make them sign it every time they come in, you know, the old saying, like with cigarettes, if you don't look like you're 35, put your ID, you know, I'm not gonna take the chance, but I'd like to see something somewhere in between, I think that you were duped by this individual, and he did probably show you an ID, and you became, or your staff became comfortable with the individual, and he came back there on several occasions, and you didn't feel the need to do that, and unfortunately, they came in one night when he didn't have it. That's why the police were not able to, you know, it'd be nice if they would have confiscated an ID on him. I'd suggest a one-day closing and a $500 fine, the option of the owner.
Is there a, is the motion?
It's a motion. I'm sorry, could I clear, do you mean a 500 or a one day? Yeah, that's because that's the...
Either or.
Right, I believe before she was proposing a $1,000 fine or a two-day closing, one or the other, and I'm cutting it in half, saying that this is one of those cases where clearly, I think, you know, both parties, you know, have made some arguments that I find sustainable, and that some punishment because of severity, you know, we've always treated liquor licenses, you know, in the respect of how important they are and the responsibility of the person who holds that license, and anytime there's an underage person drinking in an establishment, unless, you know, he was clearly caught with an ID of someone else, or a false ID in your establishment, there is some responsibility you must take, and that's why I propose what I propose.
Motion has been made, is there a second to that motion?
I will second that motion.
Madam President, I just wanna clarify, because the police, the police chief had said this, but I wanted to clarify it with this one as well, that if they, if they opt for the one-day closing, the actual date is chosen by the chief, so, which is likely to be a weekend day as opposed to like not a Monday night or something.
On or before September 4th, for the men not to look...
At a date that's acceptable to the chief, is the way it is, because, you know, he may look at the circumstances and allow him a weekday instead of a weekend and not trying to punish him too much.
But it has to be approved by the chief.
It has to be approved by the chief, yes.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded, all those in favor of that motion, raise your hand. All those opposed, I think that motion carries five to two.
Five to two.
Okay, thank you, chief, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
We hope not to see you again.
I hope so, too.
I'm gonna stop up to your place, card me, make me feel good.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion for the next two items, the renewal of the annual flea market license, and also a request for victory license for DeMarco's Cafe, both of those be approved, meeting all legal requirements.
Second.
That's fine to make the motion, but before you vote, I do, I think, they are public hearings, I think you need to call and find out if there's anybody who wishes to...
They are...
Board of Licenses and Public Hearings?
Yep.
Yeah.
One at a time.
Well, I thought it's not a public hearing.
The public hearing was the show cause hearing.
That's correct.
And the licenses come under the licensing commissioners.
Once again, I would ask for clarification of that.
I think the flea market, I think the flea market license...
Requires...
Requires a public hearing.
Okay, then I'll withdraw my motion then.
Right, I mean, I think we can do it quickly, but I think we still have to give the opportunity if anyone's here.
You know something, I think we need to start separating it on the agenda, what is actually a public hearing and what is just a regular license, because...
Yep, I think you're right.
We need to do that, and I think I was suggesting once before, Nancy, just do it.
And it's getting late, so we need to keep our...
I make, I make a motion that we approve the particular license for DeMarco's Cafe, because it doesn't require, it doesn't require a public hearing.
You're taking the item out of order, so therefore a motion to take...
No, 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 come on.
It's too late.
I'll second, I'll second it, meeting all legal, meeting all legal requirements.
Motion to move, motion to move my seat.
Oh, you're a Democrat?
Yes, that's the cafe, it's seven o'clock. So am I, so am I.
Hold on, hold on, now, no back. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Nice venue.
Welcome, congratulations.
I was gonna, where is your cafe?
I am the old staff at the Grill.
When are you opening? Oh, okay.
As soon as you approve it.
We just did.
The tower team now has a brand new restaurant.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Do you have the right camera on for you?
Listen, I wanna get on with this agenda, folks. Okay, the next item is the annual flea market license, and the, I will open the public hearing on that matter.
No.
Mr. Ames, we'll let you...
No. Madam President, if I may, after some prolonged phone tag, we have finally been able to set a date to inspect the premises, that's this coming Thursday, we will do that at that time, so we would ask for time to conduct that inspection.
Okay. Is there anybody who wishes to be heard in the public? Is the council ready for a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the license subject to meeting all legal requirements, which will include the inspection by...
Is there a second?
If we don't, we'll be tying them up for two more weeks.
Okay, all those in...
I just wanna make clear here, before you vote, that you're approving it subject to the inspection.
Yes.
So that if the inspection is done, and Mr. Ames approves it, they can open, they don't have to wait for the council.
Right.
If it is not inspected, or if it does not meet his approval vis-à-vis life, safety issues and so forth...
They do not have a license.
The license will not be issued by the clerk, and they're not allowed to open.
Right.
Correct.
All those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Annual appointments we are not going to make.
Madam, Madam President, I feel it's my, at this point, well-earned obligation to point out that we're past 10:30, and we should probably bring things to an end, or at least move to executive session if, if that's deemed necessary by the council.
Let's look at the executive session.
I think there's some litigation there that may, may warrant some...
Yeah, the act, disposition of town-owned property needs...
Is that, or we continue it till Monday night?
Could do that.
The 31st, because it is almost 11 o'clock.
There's, I think there's some acquisition and disposition of property that needs to be done on a timely basis, and some brief litigation items, more in the way of reporting that need to be...
Okay, why don't we then, with Mr. Leonard's approval, try to move, those items are going to executive session, and I will limit people to a few words.
May I just, I just wanna clarify one thing, there's a question here, there's a note under E1, which was about the decision on purchase of surplus property at Main Road, and there is extension of time by DOT, so that can be continued, that is also possible to be discussed under executive session if you should so determine, so I just, if you intend to discuss it at all under executive session tonight, you'd need to make a special motion to move it, if not...
I have no backup information, as a matter of fact, the last meeting, Madam President, made, made reference to something...
We do have backup information on it, Paul. Yep, it's in our packs.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Well, I think we probably should go into executive session, at least hear that. So, it...
Are we, we're continuing the other items till the next regular meeting?
Yes.
So I think you need, I think you need to make a motion to...
I will make that motion and second it.
All those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand.
The next regular meeting on August 15th.
I think you also need it, then, and you're also making a motion to move E1 to, to number five?
Yes.
And under the closed executive section, under Rhode Island general laws, 42-46-5, A5.
Yes. Don usually makes that motion to go into executive session.
But it's just to move this first, then you'll have another motion to go into executive session.
They want the last one, number five, that's what the...
Yeah, I don't know if we actually need that motion, because we are gonna be discussing the issue, at least in the executives, but I'll, I'll move the motion.
I, I feel...
All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously, okay, then we will go into executive session.
So we're gonna do the litigation and acquisition of property, then I'll make a motion, then we go into executive session under 42-46-5, A2 litigation.
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand, motion carries unanimously.
Motion to remain... Motion to remain under forty-two forty-six five A five, acquisition or disposition of town-owned property. Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand.
To further remain, to further remain for another,